Welcome to the March 12, 2018, meeting of the Marquette City Commission. I'd like to call this meeting in order. Would you please rise with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to start off by saying tonight we have members of the Marquette Senior High School Student Council sitting with us. We invited them to our meeting so that they can see how city government works and what we do here. These students hopefully will be our future leaders. Hopefully they'll serve us on the city, state level, perhaps even the federal level. So we hope they get a good understanding of what we're doing here tonight. Hopefully they'll go on to volunteer and work and serve in their own communities and perhaps, you know, make it a better place to live. So if we could have the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioner Frazier.
Here.
Commissioner Plard.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Mayor Procthem Stonehouse.
Here.
Mayor Campana.
Here.
Student Council members, Eli Pickard, President.
Here. Go slow. Give them their pins.
Okay.
We're going to give them each a Marquette pin. Usually we give that to those who volunteer for the city and they are here and hopefully they'll wear it with a little bit of pride. As you call their names, if I would like to know what grade they are in. So give your name and what grade.
Eli Pickard, President.
I'm a senior.
Laura Beckman, Vice President.
I'm also a senior. Laura Beckman, also a senior.
Bo Belkowski.
Here.
I'm a freshman.
And Laura Swatjanin.
I'm a senior.
Karen Ludwig.
Okay, we come to the agenda. Before we approve the agenda, I would like to have someone make a motion that we remove, under the consent agenda, item 4F, public hearing for ordinance 663. Staff has says we're not quite ready to address that yet and they need to do more work on it. So do I have a motion to remove that? Commissioner Plard?
I move that we remove item 4F from today's agenda.
Second anywhere? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second.
Discussion?
Any?
Nope. It's just that we're not ready. It will come before us at a future meeting, but there's work that needs to be done on it. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries 7-0. Now we need approval of the agenda as amended. Would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Is there a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I'd second.
Discussion? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. We come to announcements. I'd like to comment on our boards and committees. The fact that the city has 20 boards, committees, and authorities that are made up of resident volunteers. These committees exist to study and advise the city on areas of concern within the city. We got a couple such as the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have five openings. Harbor Advisory Committee, four openings. If this is something that interests you, you need to, you know, look at this. But we have, I'd say there looks to be about 10 or 12 other committees that could use members. We regularly look for residents who are willing to volunteer a few hours each month to help make Marquette a better place. We lose members on these boards because of term limits and just turnover. It's an opportunity to do something productive, meet some interesting people, and to help shape Marquette. If you'd like to step up and help, please contact any of the commissioners, call the city manager's office, or go online. We really depend on your help and we hope you'll take an interest in doing something like this. Next we come to boards and committees. Tonight we're going to welcome seven new members to the Public Art Commission. I'll call their names and if they would come up here, please. We have Doreen Friend. We have Christine Granger. Linnea Olson Gustafson. Did I get that right? Emily Lanto. Maureen Terrell. And Tracy Wascom. Okay, we're happy to have these individuals here tonight. These are the people that are going to serve on the Public Art Commission. These are the people that are going to define public art within the city of Marquette and actually make it happen. You're just starting out, so, you know, you're starting from scratch and we hope to have good things. We know we'll get good things. The people are all dedicated and interested and that's the most important part. As part of volunteering, we like to give the Marquette pin. It's just a symbol of, you know, those who volunteer for the city and are helping to make it a better place. So I would like to, for Doreen first, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't you slide this way because the TV camera will catch you. We have Christine Granger. Christine?
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you. We have Linnea Olson Gustafson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen Hughes.
Stephen.
Thank you.
Emily Lanto.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen Terrell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How did we get shorted?
It'll show up.
You usually have an extra one.
Sorry to steal yours apparently.
This is very valuable. Hang on to it. And Tracy Wascom.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause. Either watching or...
Give us time.
Go sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for doing this. We look for great things for you. Next we have one reappointment tonight, and that would be Michael Larson to the Planning Commission. His appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending... Michael Larson is on the Planning Commission. He's going to be appointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending 2/15/2019. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that we appoint Michael Larson, the Planning Commission appointment, to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending February 15, 2019.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Comments?
None.
Seeing no comments, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. Next we come to the first public comment of the evening. Public comments, time that residents can address the commission, or you can ask to speak on one of the upcoming items on our agenda. I'm going to open public comment. You've got three minutes to speak. We need your name and address at the front podium, please. At this point, would anybody care to address the commission?
Good evening. My name is Margaret Brum and I live at 404 East Magnetic Street, Marquette, Michigan. And I really do feel outnumbered tonight. There's about twice as many of you as there usually are. The clock's not running. Oh, there it is. Okay. Last week I asked to speak on the consent agenda and that required a ruling from the city attorney because you don't usually have speech on that, so I decided this week I'd speak up front. I'm here in favor of the endorsement of the reopening of the Empire Mine, and I see a lot of young eyes looking at me saying, "Why is this so important?" So I'm just going to ask anybody in the room who worked at the Empire Mine to raise their hand. Anybody? Okay. There was a time when we were your age, when there were mines all over the Upper Peninsula, and if you weren't in the mines yourself or your family wasn't, somebody else was. Now we're down to the Tilden, and it's still going strong. But the idea of bringing back the Empire is like really a great idea. And so that's why the endorsement tonight means so much because CCI is looking for a public support for reopening the Empire. And the one thing I can add, an Empire job is very tough, very dirty, and very dangerous, and enables you to support yourself and a family, or in my case enabled me to earn enough money to pay for college. And that's the good part of it. The other part of it is, couldn't have been said better than in the Mining Journal. I actually get the Mining Journal and I clip it out. At the end, it talked about all the history of the mines and why it's so important here, but at the end it said, "Without the mines, Marquette wouldn't exist," basically because Marquette was created as a port for the Jackson Mining Company to bring in boats to take the ore on the lakes. But also without the mines, the Marquette Mining Journal, your hometown newspaper, wouldn't be named the Marquette Mining Journal. That's how fundamental mining is to this area. So again, I appreciate your patience on this issue and I appreciate the fact that this resolution is on the board tonight, and I hope that you endorse it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. My name is Sherry Shavel. 911 West Fair Avenue, Marquette. I just wanted to thank you for the mats that you're going to be installing at the end of the walkways that will allow me to hopefully get into the exterior. The walkways were great, and I went down them, but at the end it's still just too far to get the wheelchair out to the edge of the lake. So the mats are going to be very helpful. And I also want to encourage you to vote yes on the Empire Mine because it's a crucial, crucial part of who and what
Good evening. I'm Darlene Allen, 805 North Front Street in Marquette. I'm here with the League of Women Observer Corps tonight, and I came with our regular observer just to mention to the city commission that this week is known as Sunshine Week. Sunshine Week highlights the importance of open government and freedom of information, and basically is saying that citizens have the right and responsibility to know what government is up to and to play an active and educated role in that government. The League's missions and projects also promote these rights and support these responsibilities. And I wanted to take the opportunity to thank the city commissioners for also playing your role in supporting an open government. My experience so far has been that you do, in fact, do that, providing the agendas and materials online, providing meeting videos so folks that can't make it can watch, allowing for public comment at each of your meetings. And also I just want to thank you personally for your support of the League activities. You have been very welcoming, as have other government groups of our volunteer observers that come to the meetings. And when we launched our first candidate forum, which happened to be for the city commissioners' race last November, you were very supportive. The candidates were all open and interested in participating, which is important, to let voters know what their ideas are and what their positions are. The city manager allowed for us to use the chambers, and I appreciate that. We appreciate that a great deal. And city clerk Chris Hizares and her coworker Sean were extremely supportive in helping us as we sort of learned the ropes and figured out how to run a forum, and we really appreciate that. So I just want to let you know it's Sunshine Week and we appreciate the work that you do and we appreciate your openness in doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the commission? Anyone? Anyone? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close this portion of public comment. We're going to move the presentations. We have one presentation tonight. That presentation is the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have Chairman Bradley Newman. Brad, you're already there. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think I've got control of the slideshow here. Tonight I'm just giving you a highlight of the Board of Zoning Appeals activity for 2017. My name is Brad Newman. I'm the chair of the BZA. Presumably, I guess, I was absent, excused at our last meeting, and I think I was again given that sentence of chairman. But happy to do it, and it's something I do enjoy. Maybe I'll echo some comments the mayor made a little later in terms of opportunities to serve. This is a pretty exciting one for citizens here in city Marquette. So here's what our board looks like. We appear to be a full board, although you can see that several members have actually had their terms expire. And what the charter allows is for these members to continue to serve until there has been a new member appointed. So as the mayor commented, we really do have several open positions, although you only see one listed as vacant there. This is a board that has quite a responsibility. We serve sort of as a quasi judicial entity here in the city of Marquette and have quite a professional bunch here. If you ever come to our meeting, we try to keep it pretty formal and act the part. 2017 meetings, we meet the first Thursday of the month, and we occasionally do have a request for a special meeting. Did have some absences, but most of those were excused. We actually meet quite a lot. You see, we only have two cancellations there for a zoning board of appeals. The, you know, the regularity of our meetings is rather unique compared to other cities of our size. So our board finds its authority in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. That's a statute that was created out of three former statutes in 2006. So of course, the city's zoning ordinance predates 2006. That authority has been around since the early 20s for cities and villages in Michigan. But the Zoning Enabling Act does say that zoning shall create a zoning board of appeals. Of course, zoning is a fairly rigid application applied across to pretty irregular landscape, certainly in the city of Marquette with our hills and rock and shoreline type properties. We do have a lot of need for some flexibility in a rather rigid scheme like zoning. Overall, our responsibilities include interpreting the zoning ordinance and occasionally the zoning map. If staff is questioned about the way a particular provision in the zoning ordinance is interpreted, as they've interpreted historically, then an applicant has the ability to get an official opinion by the zoning board of appeals, and it's only our group that can give that official interpretation. When we give an interpretation, our opinion on that then is the law. We also hear appeals of administrative decisions. So that is the situation where the community development staff might issue a permit, or the planning commission might review and approve a special land use. Those are administrative decisions that are bound by the standards in the ordinance, and occasionally an applicant or a aggrieved party might take issue with that administrative decision, and they have the ability to appeal to our group. That's where that quasi judicial role comes in. We also, and this is where we see most of our work, is reviewing requests for variances or deviations from the standards in the ordinance. Those are dimensional variances, or also called non-use variances. Here in the city of Marquette, the city commission sometime in the past removed the authority of the zoning board of appeals to issue use variances. So the variances that we hear are really dimensional things, setbacks, parking requirements, things of that nature. We also occasionally are asked to designate non-conforming uses for what's considered Class A status. That's a status that allows for a non-conforming use or structure or lot to be expanded, modified to an extent. As you know, a non-conforming use is something that existed prior to the zoning law that made it illegal. It is actually a legal use because it predated zoning. But generally, communities like to limit the proliferation of non-conformities, and so we might be asked to approve a Class A status to allow some expansion of a non-conformity. So here's what our workload looked like in 2017. All of our cases here this past year were dimensional variance requests. We did have a little bit of activity in the Circuit Court. You don't see that here, but one of our decisions from 2016 was appealed to Circuit Court. We prevailed in that case at the local county Circuit Court. I'm not sure of the status of any further appeal at that time. Some of our things that we're looking forward to in the future year would be to just continue to pursue educational opportunities. As I said, the ZBA is somewhat unique in its role and its function in the city, and so we want our members to be well-versed in roles, responsibilities, and really limitations of our decision-making authority. And we, as since I've been chair, we've tried to make it a point to share some educational updates at our regular meetings and, you know, maybe share recent case law or highlight articles in some of the publications that relate to zoning board functions. So we're doing some of the education informally, but professional training is something we also are interested in in the upcoming year. Vacancies, as I mentioned, we've got several. I guess I'll make a plug and a plea to the citizenry, you know, come out and try your hand at the Board of Zoning Appeals. It's pretty interesting to get a better idea of the construction, development, and planning process, and it's certainly an enlightening experience. We do also have the need to really continue to promote the awareness of all the city's codes and ordinances. From time to time, we get presented with what we call, you know, after-the-fact variance requests, where a property owner or maybe contractor has proceeded with a project without first getting a variance from the zoning ordinance or the sign code or the fence code. And, you know, that's a problem. We do want it to be known upfront, of course, about these things, and, you know, we have interest in regularly putting out flyers to any of the home building stores and other places where people might find information about construction projects. So, you know, the city commission's support of the community development department in mailing informational resources and the like, we would support that. I think that's what I have for you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Brad. Commissioners, got any questions? Concerns? I guess you covered it well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your board is never lacking for items, so, you know, I'm sure it's an interesting board. I would like to see more people come forward and volunteer to be on the board. It's, like you said, an interesting board, so...
Mr. Mayor, if I could, one more comment.
Sure.
You reminded me of something. Certainly our workload is larger than some committees or boards, but the land development code is a fantastic project. One of the outcomes of that will be to really reduce the workload on this board. As we move to create a zoning scheme that's more consistent with the actual built environment as it exists now, you know, so many of the lots, say, on the east side that are non-conforming lots now, given the current zoning, will be brought into conformance, and that'll allow property owners to move forward with projects without seeking a variance, and that'll change our workload. So this is a good move to streamline the regulatory framework here and make it easier for folks to move forward with investments in their properties. And so maybe we'll have fewer meetings in the course of the year and more people will be interested in spending their Thursday evenings with us on occasion. Thank you.
Good. That sounds better for everyone involved, you know. So thank you very much. Appreciate you coming tonight. Next we come to the consent agenda for the evening. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none? This requires a roll call vote because there is a resolution on it. City clerk, could we have it, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plard?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Procthem Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes. Passes 7-0. Next we come to unfinished business. Tonight we have review of the short-term rental ordinances. City clerk, could you possibly give us the background there, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Background. In May and August 2017, the city commission adopted ordinances to provide for short-term rentals in the city. Recently, city commissioners brought forth concerns by persons who cannot meet the current standards for multiple-unit rentals. In response, the city manager initiated the previously scheduled one-year review of the ordinances, and the planning commission has begun taking public comment and conducting research on the efficacy of the current ordinances. As well, the fire department has reviewed their portion for any needed housekeeping changes and will also be ensuring compatibility with the planning commission work as directed by the city commission. The city commission is being asked to clarify their specific matters of concern and direct the planning commission work. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation: direct the planning commission and staff to review and, if necessary, initiate amendments to address the specific concerns of the city commission with regard to short-term rentals. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Plard?
I move that we direct the planning commission and staff to review and, if necessary, initiate amendments to address the specific concerns of the city commission with regards to short-term rentals.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Reynolds? Any comment? Discussion? Commissioner Plard?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is part of the job of...
This is part of the job of passing ordinances and taking a look at things, and generally, as a commission, we take a look at things after about a year. We know that there's maybe some wrinkles, and there's some things that we need to adjust, and we're happy to do that. And so, this is just a good example of the city taking a look, and then the commission taking a look, and everybody getting an opportunity to see how these ordinances have worked, what doesn't work, and how can we make it better.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds, anything?
I just echo Commissioner Plard, and I'm thankful of staff and the planning commission for continuing to look at this, because as I've said in previous meetings, I've had one resident contacting me every single day relentlessly, so I'm glad that we can clear up this issue and help out our residents, so...
Thank you. I also had a few phone calls from a resident. Any other commissioners? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. Next, we have one new business item. That item is the Marquette Maritime Museum, Inc., user agreement. The user agreement. City clerk, could we have the...
Thank you, Mayor. Background. The Marquette Maritime Museum Association, Inc., has requested the city commission consider entering into an agreement for use of the Marquette Lighthouse to conduct tours of the lighthouse on the property previously owned by the U.S. Coast Guard. The Marquette Maritime Museum and city previously had a one-year agreement that expired on November 1st, 2017. Staff has worked with the city attorney and Marquette Maritime Museum Association, Inc., to draft a standard use agreement which provides for the terms and conditions of the request. The monthly payment shall be equal to half of the Marquette Maritime Museum's gross revenue derived from lighthouse tours. The term of the agreement shall be from January 1, 2018, through December 31, 2020. The recently approved City of Marquette Lighthouse property land use plan supports this agreement. Fiscal effect, the general fund will receive 50% of gross monthly revenue derived from the lighthouse tours. Last year, the city received $8,587.50. Recommendation, approve the agreement for use of the Marquette Lighthouse with Marquette Maritime Museum Association, Inc., for the purpose of conducting lighthouse tours and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Mr. Mayor, if I can have a point of order just for a second. Addressing a question to the city attorney, you, of course, are aware that I am a board member at the Maritime Museum. I would like to again make certain that, as I understand the charter, as I receive no compensation from the museum or financial gain in any way, that this does not prevent me from voting on this motion.
I think we have talked about this before, but that is true. You receive no direct or indirect compensation being on this board and have no interest in the funds that will be paid or received, correct?
Correct.
You can vote on this.
Thank you.
No conflict.
Wanted to make sure the public knew and understood that very clearly. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And commissioners, I'd like to also point out that if we do have questions, we have three members of the Maritime Museum who are here tonight, possibly to answer questions if we should have it. So next, we need a motion. Would there be a motion? Commissioner Smith?
I move that we approve the agreement for use of the Maritime Lighthouse with the Marquette Maritime Museum Association, Inc., for the purpose of conducting lighthouse tours and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Support.
Do we have any discussion, comments? Commissioner Smith, anything? Commissioner Frazier, anything?
It's a great resource for the Maritime Museum, also a great resource for the community, because everybody likes to tour the lighthouse. It's a great thing for tourists, it's a great place to be, and the city takes care of it as far as, you know, maintenance, everything, and the Maritime Museum looks over it and conducts tours. It's a great win-win situation for both.
Thank you. Commissioner Plard?
I'd like to just add a little bit to Commissioner Frazier's comments. The Maritime Museum, we're very fortunate that Maritime Museum is right, basically right there on property, and they are the experts. And so, again, we're fortunate to have them be willing to take on the onus, as it were, to do the tours. It's going to be great for anyone who wants to take a tour, and especially for tourists, and I think we anticipate a pretty good tourist season this year as well. I'm sure a lot of people will take advantage of these tours. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none? We're going to vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. Next, we come to the last public comment of the evening. Again, public comment is when citizens may address the commission. You've got three minutes. You need name and local address, or name and address at the front podium, please. I'm an open public comment. Does anybody wish to address the commission at this time?
Hello. Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic. This may be the first example for these young people of someone actually putting their money where their mouth is, but by way of explanation, two weeks ago, the issue of the Empire Mine Resolution came up, and it wasn't on the agenda, and I had some off-meeting emails with the members of the commission, and I made a flippant statement to the effect that since some of the other boards in the area were giving gifts to CCI, appropriate gifts to let them know how interested they were, I would be happy to spring for a six-pack of locally brewed microbrew. And it occurred to me at the time that I did not know where to get that, because I'm not into locally brewed microbrew, but fortunately, White's Party Store is, and out of an abundance of optimism, I went there and bought this, and now with the mayor's permission, I'd like to approach the city clerk and hand it off to you as my proposal for a gift to go along with our resolution, because one of the other local boards is giving pasties. Lowry's Pasty Shop is giving pasties, and I've never been anyplace where people have been offered a pasty, and they haven't been offered a beer. So this is, and by the way, I'm legal to buy this stuff, and it's not $25 or more, but it's locally brewed microbrew, and it's our future, because I made a big deal about the empire being part of what we were, but this is our future, and it is, I guess, the best you can get around here. I don't know. The White's clerk seemed to think it was. So, may I have your permission to give this over to the clerk?
You may.
Okay.
Just a six-pack, though?
Money where your mouth is, Mr. Mayor. I made one statement, and my first email the next day was from the city manager saying, "It's on the agenda," and I went, "Okay, I better be ready." So, I'm ready. Okay, and I'm handing this over to the custody of the city clerk with my best wishes that it be released appropriately. I'm done. Again, my thanks to everybody on the commission, and you never go wrong with a pasty and a six-pack. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get to the head of Cliffs somehow.
With the pasty.
With the pasties. Anybody else that wished to address the commission at this point?
Good evening. I'm Valerie Olson, and I live at 116 Hillcrest Trail in Marquette. I'd like to address the commission again regarding the issue of the fluoridation of our water supply. The mayor brought the point up at the last two meetings ago, the issue of dental benefits, and I guess what I would like to say is, since there are numerous medical doctors and researchers and scientists who have cited numerous studies, hundreds of studies listed on fluoridealert.org as to the harmful effects of ingesting fluoride, and since we can have a benefit to the teeth with topical application without the necessity of ingesting flucosillic acid, which has never had even one safety study done long-term to prove safety for ingestion by our children, our infants, pregnant women, to whom we know the fluoride passes through the placenta to the fetus, that's not even disputable, that we can, instead of putting this substance into the water, even though it is in a small amount, it is cumulative, that is absolutely not disputable either, that it slowly accumulates in the body. With children, that's especially important, because it can contribute to ADHD in children, that's critical, that we would be putting a neurotoxin, according to many doctors, and by the way, there are dentists now who have done a complete one-eighty to, after looking at the evidence and seeing that, hey, we can do topical application of fluoride, benefit the teeth, without posing risk to the nervous system, the thyroid gland, multiple issues with children and infants because they don't have the ability to detox this substance. So, I wanted to read a little bit from Dr. Mercola's website, one of his most recent articles. There is now a petition that includes more than 2,500 pages of scientific documentation detailing the risks of water fluoridation to human health, because the amount of fluoride now regularly consumed by millions of Americans exceeds the doses repeatedly linked to neurotoxic effects. So we have a problem now that we're just not getting fluoride in the water, we're getting it in our food supply, because if juice that children may drink, or any of our number of processed foods are made processed in a city that fluoridates water, that is increasing their fluoride load, and we have no way to regulate how much a child infant whose mother is making their formula with fluoride, how much they're ingesting, which makes it a very difficult issue. So I really urge you all, please go to fluoridealert.org. I will send an email that will give you this website, so you can go and review the science. Please discuss this issue. This is really critical, and let Marquette be one of the communities among the over 300 that have elected recently, in the last couple of years, to discontinue this practice. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Melissa Berant, and I live at 943 Wilson Street, and I also just wanted to come to just bring to your attention my concerns with fluoridating the water as well. I was diagnosed with a thyroid disorder four years ago, and it's been, it's had a significant impact on my life. And so, currently, you know, as I'm pursuing different treatment options, one of them that I've chosen is to stop drinking fluoridated water, because I have researched and found a lot of evidence that supports that fluoride can interfere with thyroid function and cause pathology. And so, currently, I'm having to fill up jugs of water at my parents' house in Harvey, which is extremely inconvenient, because I moved to Marquette recently, and so, I just, as a resident of Marquette, don't feel that I should have to be doing that, and feel that I should have a choice in, you know, just, or have the right to be drinking water that doesn't have something added to it that could be harming my health, and specifically a condition that I've been diagnosed with. And so, I just wanted to read a portion of an article that I found, because I do believe that it's really important to see what science says and what kind of evidence there is for, you know, our beliefs. So, this is just a portion of an article that was published in the Scientific World Journal, and it's in the discussion section, and it says that fluoride has modest benefits in terms of reduction of dental caries, but significant costs in relation to cognitive impairments, hypothyroidism, dental and skeletal fluorosis, enzyme and electrolyte derangement, and uterine cancer. Given that most of the toxic effects of fluoride are due to ingestion, whereas its predominant beneficial effect is obtained via topical application, ingestion or inhalation of fluoride predominantly in any form constitutes an unacceptable risk with virtually no proven benefit. Improvements, I'm going to skip that part. Artificial or natural fluoridation of water represents a public health hazard and significantly damaging health where fluoride levels are high but are clearly demonstrated as having harmful effects at lower levels, found where water has been artificially fluoridated. In addition, ingested water is a very ineffective way of delivering fluoride to teeth, given its topical effect, but it is an important cause of fluoride's adverse effects on human health, as all sources of fluoride actively artificially fluoridated water is the most practical source to eliminate in order to reduce its human hazards at population levels. So, a lot of that echoes just what Valerie said, and so I just really like you to strongly reconsider the practice of fluoridating Marquette's water supply. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi there. Colleen Roberts, 903 Adams Street, Marquette. And I'm here to ask each one of you, because you are very active people, and I don't know where your camera is, but all the people in the TV audience, to urge CCI to open in Marquette County. I think it is very beneficial to us. I know you passed a resolution, but I think we have to let them know how much we really want it here. It'll be disposable income that is going to filter into our community, and I don't think we can urge too hard to let them know that we really want this. That's all I have to say, but each one of you are in civic organizations, whether it be the Rotary, or the Lions, or whatever, and, you know, the people that work there are going to be part of our community, and we want them to know that they are very welcome here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Does anyone else wish to address the commission at this time? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close public comment. We're going to move to comments from the commission. We'll start with Commissioner Reynolds.
Well, only two comments for this evening. One, just an invite, I know you guys got my email, but for anybody else, the Chamber of Commerce is opening our coworking space. I'm on the board, and we're opening, and our grand opening is tomorrow at 3:00. We're doing a ribbon cutting, and we'd like lots of people from the public to come see what we've been up to. The also other part, as you have noticed, we each have this student council person next to us, and Hannah, I've known for nine years, and I requested she sit next to me because I'm so proud of her and the woman she's become in these years that I've been around her. She's an All-A Honorable, she's going to Saint Norbert's to play tennis and go to college. She's currently the city manager intern in the back, and she's by far the most hard-working teenager that I've seen in a long time, so just wanted to let you know that I'm proud of you.
Thank you. Ms. Wodgin, did you have anything you'd care to add?
I'd just like to say thank you to the whole city commission for letting all of us be here today. I thought this was really interesting. I work in the manager's office, obviously, but I've never seen this actually happen, so it was nice to learn this way.
Thank you. Commissioner Plard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to say that I definitely support the reopening of the Empire Mine. Thanks, thank everybody for coming up. I know it's very difficult to do, to speak publicly. Believe me, I understand that, and I'm really impressed with people who come up to public comment and express their opinions. So, thank everybody that came up and expressed their opinions about that. Just want to let you know we do support that, and I also want you to know that I am rethinking the fluoridation issue, and will do some more research on my own also. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Beckman? Anything?
I'd just like to thank everyone for having us, and it's a real pleasure to be here and learn through our local government.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Couple of quick hits. Certainly encourage everybody to please join a committee. We need you, and certainly, your ability to be on a city committee to help influence policy, to help move that wagon forward is just critical for us. So, all the openings are posted on the city website. I encourage you again to please consider that and please do that. We are continuing to work the glass issue. That hasn't gone away. We've got some more wrestling to do on it, but again, it's right in our radar, and we're continuing to work it. So, little patience for everybody before we can come up with a good recommendation. Of course, we all support Cliffs being here, absolutely 100%. I don't know anybody in this county that I've ever come into that does not support seeing the mine reopen, but I would encourage people to do a little research, and to do it in this regard. Hop on your computer, go to Google, and Google up Cleveland Cliffs, Minnesota, and see what's happening on the Minnesota Range, because at the same time activities are happening here, there's other activities happening there. And to be truly informed with how Cliffs will make a decision, and where we are and where they are, you've got to go look. So, take the initiative, use the Google, use the search function for it, use the news function to hop in when you get to the choices, and you'll see some terrific writing on mining industry today that's appearing in the Minnesota papers, particularly those on the Iron Range up in Minnesota and Hibbing, and also in the Minneapolis, the Duluth Star Tribune, which again is extraordinary. They have gifted writers there that truly understand mining, mining technology, mining politics, mining financial aspects. So, the education side... So the education side, the opportunity for all of us to learn that is really there and really important. I encourage you to do so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Just wanted to say, as a former Marquette senior high school student council member, thank you all for coming. I look forward to seeing what you can do in the future. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Ludwig?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you so much for the opportunity of having us here today, and it was great to experience this meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
Want to say congratulations, NMU. They made their championship game. It was a great, great weekend of hockey, and now we're going to have a UP champion for their local hockey league. I mean, Michigan Tech made the championship and so has NMU, so either us or Michigan Tech is going to be a champion for their hockey league. I think it's great for the community and great for Northern to be in there running, and I think, I thought maybe spring, I got a chance to go way down south, the Illinois border, and to visit a boat shop down there, and there's hardly any ice in the lake, it's very open, it's 40 degrees, felt like spring down there. Thought maybe spring's that way, then I see the weather forecast, supposed to be storming, and we got about a foot of ice in the harbor, so I don't think our spring's here yet, but it might be here eventually sometime, we're hoping. So, you know, the mining thing is a great, I support the mines totally, but again, like Commissioner Stonehouse said, it's politics and they're looking for benefits from the state, that's what they're looking for. We learned at that meeting with, if we have them, Minnesota gives great benefits at the state level, allowed to open their mines, so it's up to the state to see if they pass out the laws or not. I mean, we support them, everybody in the community supports them, but it's up to the state level to see what they can do.
Thank you. Mr. Belkowsky, anything?
I'd just like to thank everybody for letting us come here and for the nice little gifts we got. It's definitely going on my shelf somewhere. It's, yeah, so it's definitely interesting seeing how things work on a much higher level than high school, so just thanks for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlegel?
I would encourage people to seek out the petition that was circulating on social media in regards to the mines. That's, you know, at least you can get your name on there, let people know how many are backing them in that manner, and I'm really excited to see the student council reps here. I watched the commission meeting from last year, and looking back as a student council rep throughout the school, my school years, it was what really made me want to be a part of many different things, including, you know, state or even just local polity, and it made me become more interested in what happens at the state level because it's, you know, it's all about being informed. So I'm really excited about these guys that are sitting up here, and I hope that they do take your words of encouragement to heart and take it with them wherever they end up. I hope you come back here, I hope we have reason for you to come back here at some point in time, other than to visit family, but it's exciting to see young leaders, and if there's ever anything I can do for you, look me up, I'll do what I can. Thanks.
Thank you. The president of the student council, Mr. Pickard, anything?
I'd like to say thank you on behalf of all of student council. This is the second year that I've come to one of these meetings, and I think it's been a great opportunity to see how everything runs, so I hope that we can continue this on this tradition on with, for further years so that all these non-seniors get to come again and really get a feel for it. So I'd like to say thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the first question, commissioners, how many of you were on student councils? Okay, sort of, it's a start, it's a start. Glad you did it. No, we're happy to have them here tonight. We do this once a year, and hopefully it opens their eyes to something above and beyond what they normally do, and hopefully they will, you know, maybe not in the next few years, but as time goes by, they will participate in city government or township government and hope to help their communities. That's all we really want, and it's, it's, it's an interest, they have it now, hopefully it will continue in the future. It being Sunshine Week, opening up to transparency and whatnot, I think this is good that we're exposing them. I think that's a good point. Another note, BZA. It's an active, interesting committee, and they do need new members, so people, consider this, it's, it would be very helpful if we could get more people on that committee. Lastly, of course, I would like to comment about fluoride in the water. I want the residents of Marquette to feel assured that our fluoride, we've been using it for 20, 30 years, never had a problem, it's safe, it's effective, every dentist, again, that I've talked to encourages it. It's advocated by the American Dental Association and the Michigan Dental Association. Lastly, talk to your dentist or your dental hygienist and see what they say. Thank you. City manager?
Thank you. Just three things. First of all, I have community office hours this week, Wednesday, 10 o'clock, Peter White Public Library, and I probably should have done this, Mr. Mayor, given it to you during your announcements, but I'd like to mention that our new service center won two awards recently, and I think I found a solution to recycling glass. The first is from the Bill, it's a Bill Michigan Award from the Associated General Contractors to Gunlock Champion for the construction, and it's not late. And the second one was the American Council of Engineering Companies of Michigan, 2018 Merit Award for Engineering to Fishbeck Thompson, Carr &amp; Huber, who were our engineers for that project. So these will be at the service center, and I think it's quite a sentiment that our building was recognized. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned.